All right, good evening. All right, everybody. Quiet down a little bit. Good evening and welcome to the December 3, 2014, hearing of the City of Brookhaven Planning Commission. I'm Stan Siegel, and I'll be presiding this evening. This public meeting has been called on matters pursuant to the Brookhaven zoning ordinance and specified on tonight's agenda. The December 3, 2014, meeting is called to order. As a way of introduction, I'll call the roll and have each commissioner acknowledge their presence, and I'll start with... I'll start on this end, give her a chance to catch her breath. Commissioner Chris Bottiker.
Present.
Commissioner Shannon Cameron.
Present.
Commissioner John Funny.
Present.
I'm Stan Siegel. Commissioner Bert Levy.
Present.
And Commissioner Caitlin Miller.
Present.
Okay, and Commissioner Rob Frank Core is not here this evening. So let the record show that six members are present. Commissioner Frank Core is not in attendance, and we have a quorum, and we're going to proceed. At this time, I'll do it too. I want everybody needs to turn off their cell phones or put it on silent, so... I'll tell you a story about my son-in-law while you're doing that, who's a musician, and told everybody to do that, and then during the first set, of course, his phone rang. So, mine's off now. Well, let's see, do we have any... Let's go through the... Just so you know who we've got here. We have our Director of Community Development, Mr. Ben Song. Our attorney is Emily Macheska-Preston. The Assistant Director of Community Development is Patrice Ruffin-Dickerson. And we've got Drew Murray is here, and Kelly Reynolds is the one who's been trying to get comment cards counted up and everything. So by now, you've figured out there's a number of copies of the agenda, and related documents are in the back of the room. And as you know, if you'll be making a comment this evening, you'll need to fill out a public comment card and turn it in, and then when you come up, we'll ask you to introduce yourself, give us your address, and speak. And I'll give you a little more about it before. There are four cases we're going to be hearing this evening. So this planning commission is established by the Code of Ordinances of the City of Brookhaven. Our purpose is to conduct public hearings on land use, zoning changes, co-text amendments, and other related matters. The planning commission's actions are not a final determination regarding the matters before us, but only a recommendation to the mayor and the city council of the viewpoint of this commission. And we'll give you the dates... Well, we can tell you that the... Are the four cases are being heard on the city council's agenda on what date?
December 16.
On Tuesday, December 16, at 7:00, right back here in the council chambers. So it'll go forward. Whatever goes on tonight will go forward to the city council with the staff recommendations, either for against, or whatever, and our recommendations. I'd also like to say that when making these recommendations... We've been doing this now for about two years. We really do our utmost to balance the land use with the interests of the applicant, the neighboring community, and the entire city of Brookhaven. The one thing I could tell you about all of the commissioners up here, we all live in the city. We're all your neighbors. We know every piece of property. We know what's going on, and we are going to live through whatever recommendations we make and whatever decisions the city council makes. We're going to live through them right with you. So we're just doing this to make Brookhaven a better place to live and work. All right. So before we take up tonight's agenda, let me tell you what the process is going to be. We'll call an item for the hearing, and the staff will present a summary of the item and report their findings, either for or against, and any recommendations they might have on stipulations. Then we'll open the public hearing, the public comments section, and the applicant or their representative will come up, and they'll have 10 minutes. They can use it all up front, or they can speak for two minutes, three minutes, and say they want to reserve the rest of their time for rebuttal at the end. So yes, they get... The applicant gets the front, and the applicant gets the back. We'll then have those who are in support of the item before us come up, and those in support will have 10 minutes as well. We're going to ask each individual to come up and speak for no more than three. That's more of a courtesy than anything else. The 10 minutes is hard. Unless we, as commissioners, somebody here makes a motion, we might extend that. And we have done that, and other times we haven't. So we're looking for information. We don't just want to know... I think we can tell in some cases whether you're for or against. We're really looking for information to help us make the decisions that we need to. So 10 minutes for the applicant, 10 minutes for those in support, 10 minutes for those who are opposed. Then we'll close the public comments section, and it's our turn. At that point, we get a chance to ask the staff, the applicant, or anyone who has spoken questions, and we're going to keep doing that until we feel we have the information we need in our deliberation. And that deliberation will take place right here in front of you. We'll talk it all through, and then somebody will make a motion to either recommend to the city council to approve the item, to deny the item, or to defer the item. So lastly, just remember, we know that zoning matters are emotional. You know, our homes are one of the largest, if not the largest, investment that most of us have. So very emotional for everybody. So I'm going to really ask you, and this is hard, because I know you're all friends and neighbors, and we're all sitting here, you know, no hooting and hollering, no clapping, no... I mean, we can tell from what's going on, who is in support or who's against, and as you come up here, you know, we'll know that. But there's a decorum in this chamber that we're going to ask you all to follow. And I know that's hard sometimes. It's also hard for us sometimes to follow those... These kind of rigid guidelines, but we're going to work through it so that we get to hear what people have to say on all sides of this. And with that, the... If I can find my agenda item. We'll start with approval... I guess the first item is the approval of the minutes. So do I have a motion for approval of the November 3 Planning Commission Work Session Meeting Minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the November 3, 2014, Planning Commission Work Session Meeting Minutes.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Nope? Okay, all in favor of approval of the November 3 Work Session Meeting Minutes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, I'm looking for... I'll entertain a motion for approval of the November 5, 2014, Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 5 regular meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of approval of November 5 Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Third, approval of November 12 Planning Commission Work Session Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission Work Session Minutes for November 12.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And we're going to get there, folks. Okay, then approval of the November 12, 2014, Planning Commission Special Called Public Hearing Minutes. Do I have a motion? One on this end?
I wasn't there, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Planning Commission Special Called Public Hear and Meeting that was held on November 12, 2014.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
That's done.
Organizational and procedural items?
Mr. Chairman, just one item to report. Again, it's just to reiterate that we do have a direct email that could be dispersed to the Planning Commission. The email is planningcommission@brookhaven.gav. Along with the Planning Commission, it would also be received by staff as well so that we could document it.
Okay, I think everybody knows that, because we've received an email from everybody here, I think. Yeah. But that's actually a big step in communications. What was happening prior to that is you would send in emails to go on the public record, and when we got our packet, which was seven days ahead, we got all your emails. So then we had seven days to read everything. Now, when you send it to planningcommission@brookhaven.gav, it goes on the public record, and it comes to us in our email accounts also. So we get to read it, you know, all along and up to the very last... We're still reading them on the way over.
So for those who may be accustomed to viewing those complaint... Or emails in the packets... I take that back. Who are accustomed to seeing those emails in the packets, you may no longer be seeing them, because it will be going directly to the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
But we will provide that record to the city council as well.
Yeah. I'll say also, the Zoning Board of Appeals, if you ever anything, it's the same thing happening. So it's a really big step forward for the city, and we appreciate the city doing that. All right, anything else, Ben?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so any unfinished business on our agenda this evening?
No, sir, we do not have any unfinished business.
All right, so as you can see from the items up there, we have four items that are going to be before us this evening. First item is... Oh, I'm sorry.
Cell phone.
Did I hear something? That was Richard. All right, so it's one of the parts about being half-deaf, you can't hear it, you know. First item is ID number 1588. It's ordinance RZ 14-29, rezoning from O&amp;I to O&amp;I for changes in conditions to develop an accessory parking lot, I think. And Ben, if you'll...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the request is essentially a change in condition. It will function as a rezoning, to develop an accessory surface parking lot on the subject property for the Skyland Trail campus. Skyland Trail is an existing rehabilitation center that's existing at the intersection near Beaufort Highway and Northwood Hills. Essentially, the subject property is adjacent to the campus. Skyland Trail is looking to expand their surface parking. There were specific restrictions, although the adjacent property is on O&amp;I. There are specific restrictions, limited the possibility of use of the property, and also limited the aspect of providing for additional parking. So that's why the applicant is before you tonight. With that said, the request would essentially eliminate two existing curb cuts along Childers as well as Northwood Hills. It would... Pretty much, the parking access will be provided by an existing curb cut that's already existing for Skyland Trail, so the access will be provided internally. They will provide a 30-foot setback along the western property line, adjacent to the properties near Bucket Valley Lane. They would also provide a 15-foot buffer along Childers Road. Again, this would help to alleviate any traffic issues that may have been present, and also, again, it would internalize the traffic flow to the area and also provide just a single access point off of Northwood Hills. Staff would stipulate to the report and to the conditions provided. Staff did recommend approval of the request. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll... With that, we'll open a public comment, and we'll ask the applicant or the representative... Come on up. You've got... Do we have an applicant here? Okay. Do we have a representative? Or an applicant? Or both? And you went through the process. You get 10 minutes, and you can reserve some time for... Speak part of that and reserve some time, and they're going to start clocking you, so...
You know, I don't think we're the star of the show tonight, so...
This isn't all for you. If you would introduce yourself.
My name's Lauren Standish. I'm with HGR. We're landscape architects and planners.
And I'm Clay Weaver. I'm the chief operating officer at Skyland Trail.
So I believe you heard the conditions in the request. We've worked really carefully with Drew and Aronda.
You get a little closer to mine.
Regarding the conditions. So I defer any further comment. If someone else has a comment that they need to make, we'll be happy to rebut.
Okay, so you're going to reserve the rest of your time?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate your application, and we'll then... You can sit down or move to the side if you want to just hold the rest of your time, and then we'll call you back if anybody else... So do we have anyone?
We have no speaker cards.
We have no speaker cards, either way.
No, sir.
All right, well, then you get the rest of your 10 minutes. You can stand there and... No, we don't have to use it all. If we have... Do you have a picture of what you're going to... Be glad to see.
I'm sorry, I thought that that was all included in your packet.
It is. It is. But if there's anything you'd like to comment on, we'd love to hear.
Sure.
You don't need to take all your 10 minutes.
Let me show the master plan.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that they could use the projector to display.
Lay it on the table. And the magic projector comes on.
I already have the approval on there from you, so... Okay. Here's the main campus of Skyland Trail. This is their main parking lot right here. And what we're asking is, we have bought this property, which is an abandoned C1, two-story brick building that's been vacant for a while. We're asking for our new parking lot to be on that location, which is... This is an enlargement of that, orient to the same way. So again, the main entrance would be still be using from Skyland Trail, main entrance, and then we would have a access point internal to the property, so there would not be another point of access onto Northwood Hills.
Okay.
So that's our proposal.
Okay, great. You might as well stand there for a minute if that's it, and we'll see if anybody has... I know I have a few questions. We'll see if anybody else does. So we'll start wherever. How do we start? You want to start?
Just one. Did you say that you've agreed to the staff conditions? Staff recommendations, you've agreed to those?
Right, right.
The staff had how many?
Ten.
Ten.
Ten? All right, I see a quizzical look. Yeah. On page 24 of our packet.
Okay. Do you mind repeating those?
Actually, on the last page of that document that you have right there.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
That is correct.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, anybody in here?
Nope.
I always have questions. They know, they always have... Number one, I think it was in the packet, there is community support for this. I understand we got one from Pine Hills.
That is correct, and that was included as part of the actual submittal.
Okay. Question, there was a... On the property in the back, there's a fence back there now between that property and the home behind it. I don't know if that's your fence or their fence. And if it's yours, are you going to keep a fence like that? Yeah.
This one? Yes. We will still have a privacy fence.
That is your fence?
I believe it is.
I believe that fence was constructed by the current owner of that property, yes.
Okay, so it is, you know, and you intend to keep that there.
Yes.
Do you know... Do you have any... There were also some nice trees along... There was one large tree along Northwood Hills, I guess. I don't know. But do you know what... Are we going to lose many trees when you take down that?
We will... If you can look at this plan, there's a group of nice mature trees there at the corner of Childers that will stay, as well as some mature trees down at the other parcel. We will have... We will be losing some on the internal, but we are satisfying everything back on the tree protection plan.
You know, the ones you're losing internal, are they particular specimen trees or anything big like that?
They're pines that...
Okay. And my last question is, are there going to be any variance requests? Are you, if we approve this special land use permit, are there any variances that are going to be required for the Zoning Board of Appeals? I can ask either that or...
Well, I don't believe so. I think initially, when they... Silent Trail met with Drew and the staff, we went over all the requirements, all the sort of unique aspects related to parking associated with the O&amp;I. In particular, O&amp;I, you can't have park in the front yard. They were made aware of that. They made the necessary changes and redesigned the site to accommodate and to be compliant with the O&amp;I zoning district.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't have anything else.
I have one question.
One more? Okay.
Your property is located just east of Saxon Valley. You have two buildings. Would anything change with respect to that pedestrian crossing that crosses Saxon Valley? So that pedestrian cross would still serve as the interparcel connectivity for the pedestrians?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
All right, with that, I'll close. Thank you so much. With that, I will close the public comments section, or maybe I did when I started asking questions, if you can remember. But I'll entertain a... I'll entertain a motion on RZ 14-29, Skyland Trail Campus.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve RZ 14-29 with staff recommendations.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? All right, all in favor of approval of special land use, SLUP, RZ 14-29, with staff recommendations, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. Good luck with... Okay.
We now have a seat available in the front.
Yeah, we got one more. Anybody... One more person. If you don't want the fire marshal chasing you, somebody take it. Or the fire marshal will take it. All right. Item number two on the agenda is ID 1590. It's RZ 14-30, JLB Realty LLC. It's rezoning from C1 and R100 to a PC2 mixed use. This is the Hastings, you know, just generally known as the Hastings property. Ben?
Mr. Chairman, before I get into the merits of the case itself, I believe the applicant has requested a deferral. I believe from their request, it was a 30-day deferral to push this case to the January 7 hearing. And I know that there has... This is for...
Is it? We having a party somewhere?
It's back here.
Is it the loop?
It's looping.
Is it back?
It's looping.
Oh, okay, sorry. Oh, there are people there? Okay, good deal. Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. It's apparently the same thing on a... It's us.
Yeah.
It loops. A ghost in the machine, okay.
Technical problem.
I thought we addressed that by...
Okay.
Yes. With that said, again, the applicant has requested withdrawal. I don't necessarily know if we need to necessarily get into the specific merits of it, if there were... If there are discussions to take place.
Deferral or withdrawal?
Sorry. Deferral, deferral, yes. I apologize. Deferral to the January 7 meeting. So again, I don't necessarily know if we need to get into the merits in case if there was possibly a revision that may come up from further discussions between the applicant and the neighborhood.
Well, I guess my question, and it's just... Or somebody else can add, too. I want to make sure, before we consider that, what does the community and the... You know, I mean, do we know anything other than the applicant asking for a deferral?
Again, I did receive, but...
You're still required to have the public hearing before you vote on the deferral.
Okay, so we can get it.
Yes. With that said, I believe the consensus from the neighborhood is for the deferral to go through, to allow more time for discussion to be held.
Okay, so what we'll do is, we will open the public comments section and hear from the representative of the applicant, Mr. Westmoreland.
Yeah, thanks, Colonel. On 3343 Peachtree. I think we can save some time for Mr. Song. We had requested a 30-day deferral, and we did that before, understanding that the neighborhood was willing to meet. We'd been trying to meet for some time. I understand since I sent that email in to Ms. Ruffin that they are willing to meet, perhaps working through my friend, Mr. Dillard, so... And that they are going to request and would support a 60-day deferral, so we're okay with that. This is complicated. We've got the holidays coming up, and we're happy to have 60 days to try to work through it, and then we'll amend the request to be 60 days until your February agenda.
We... Our authority and our... The zoning process allows for us to offer one cycle, actually, deferral. So our next meeting is January the 7th at 7:00 PM. So that's all we can... If we... If this commission were to agree, that's all we can do. And at that point, you're going to have to present again. We would have no... We have that point. We have to make approval or denial recommendation to the city council, who you could go to, but we can only give you... We can only offer you till...
All right, let me see if I can understand your procedure a little bit better.
Yeah.
Mr. Song and I didn't talk about this, because we were only asking...
We talked about it at the work session.
Well, we could do one of a couple of things. We could say on the record tonight that if we're talking, we'll come back and ask for further deferral in January.
Right.
On the other hand, if you're telling me that you can't do that, and the only way we can override that time period is to go to the council in December and ask to be setback further.
Now, we can recommend this evening, if we vote, we can recommend approval of a deferral to January 7.
Only, not February.
Right, to January 7. On January 7, we could then send the request to the city council with a request that they defer for another 30 days. We won't be able to do it.
No, I understand. And I'm just trying to make clear, and we've got a lot of people here that are interested in this case.
Yeah, I mean...
And I just... I want to be very clear about what we're doing, and so they'll understand what we're committing to do. We asked for 30 days before there was any dialogue about whether they were willing to meet, to the extent that we're talking. We're certainly not going to insist that it go forward if we think we can work something out with them. So if you're limited, as I understand that you are, to a 30-day deferral, then we will ask for that. But I'll say in front of their lawyer and the group that, to the extent that we're talking, we will come back and ask at that point that you ask the council to defer it further, if that's all you can do.
And that's a good... You articulated that clearly.
Okay. And I hope I don't need rebuttal, but if I do, also.
I think one solution may be, instead of granting a 30-day deferral, you would recommend deferral to the city council, where and which Mr. Westmoreland could... Where and which Mr. Westmoreland could come before the city council on the 16th and request a deferral to the February meeting date with the notion of that case being remanded back to the planning commission.
Well, that was the second thing I suggested. We come back on the 16th, ask to be put over to the February council, which means we've got to go back to you in February.
That's fine.
I don't care. I mean, I'll do whatever.
We're just trying to work it out.
Due to the complexities of the limitations that's placed on the planning commission, just recommend it, push it forward to the December 16, with everyone here knowing the understanding that the city council will grant it back to the planning commission for the February.
Well, they might grant it.
commission, is just recommend it, push it forward to the December 16th, with everyone here knowing the understanding that the city council will grant it back to the planning commission for the February.
Well, they might grant it. They might remand it back. They might choose to do what...
Yes, obviously, at this point, it's just a recommendation. That is correct.
Yeah. So I gather that's what you would like to do, because you want the 60 days, if you can.
Well, we're agreeable to 60 days. If the only way to get that is to come back on the 16th, ask that they put it off till their February agenda, then that's what we'll do.
And you weren't going to do anything else on the night of the 16th?
Well, actually, I tell you what, at least we don't have annexation that night.
That's right. All right, so you reserve the rest of your time for that? Okay, do we have, then, with that, we'll ask if there are any comment cards to speak in supportive?
We have one speaker card. I don't necessarily know if it's support or opposition, because it hasn't been checked, but it's Carol Simpson.
Okay. Again, we're, you know, we haven't, we're not hearing the particular application because we...
I'm here to speak on behalf of the Historic Brookhaven Neighborhood Association. We would very much support the deferral until February. We do have significant concerns about the height and density of this proposed development, given what is already going on on Dresden Drive and other development down the road. So we would welcome the opportunity to be able to work with the developers and come with something that's a little more neighborhood-friendly. This is a large development. It abuts a historic part of the neighborhood, and we would like to see if this couldn't come to some better resolution.
Thank you very much. That's, I know, it makes us all feel, we want to know that the community and the developer are working together on this thing, so, great. Okay, any other, thank you very much.
Doug Dillard?
Mr. Dillard, for or against, or just speaking?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Well, I'm not always on the same side. I'm just always on the right side, okay?
There you go.
No, I've been engaged by some of the neighbors, and we support a 60-day deferral. And let me just say, this is something I think you need to deal with on your rules. We rec, we recognize that you're a recommending body, and that's all you are. To have a 30-day limitation on your ability to recommend a deferral is, doesn't make a lot of sense. So we've got a, we've now got to go to the city council on the 16th and ask that they do a 60-day deferral to get it on your, on your February agenda. So I think we need to think about that in the future, but we support the 60-day deferral. We will look forward to working something out.
We always, we always appreciate the advice. I will say that if you could join our, join us for the January 7th work session, you'll find that there's language on it and an item on the agenda to change that 30 days to...
All I, all I need is an invitation, Mr. Chairman.
Emily, it's going to be, we are already working on, but that's, we, we're, we're in agreement on that. All right, so with that, nothing else?
One more.
One more?
Bruce Crabtree. Mr. Crabtree, are you here? He may be in that other...
Bruce Crabtree? Oh, they're back there talking. That's the noise coming from the witness.
Is there, seriously? It's like our overflow room.
Okay, all right, so he's, Mr. Crabtree said he's, no, no, okay, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, so with that, I will close the public comment section. And does anybody have any questions for?
I have a question for Chad. Ben, and you guys were saying we can recommend to council, explain this to me again.
Yes.
The council does not have the 30-day limit, so you could recommend to council that it be deferred. If I wanted. And in your recommendation, at least say 30 days, but you could make it 60.
60.
It will, it will make them know that the applicant during, the applicant will tell them as well.
Right, the customary practice up to this point for PC, before we put that, you know, 30-day rule in, was you would recommend the deferral for X amount of days with the request to remand it back if the council sees fit.
Okay, and there was somebody out here that raised their hand. I will tell you that, that our processes are, as you heard, they're pretty, you know, we've worked through them. So we had people had an opportunity to submit a comment card, and if you had an applicant, you know, and it's like, we can't ask questions unless you were already speaking. So I apologize, if there was something you want to say, we just can't, you know, just have to...
We just wanted to be able to hear.
Oh, okay, well, then just say, okay.
Nobody's speaking into the microphone. It's as if you're just discussing it among yourselves, so the audience...
That's a reasonable thing for you to ask. Thank you. We'll, we'll ratchet, we'll try to ratchet this up. Is that, is that any better?
That's better.
Okay. It's equal, because I can't hear either for the most part. So, all right, so with that, I will, anybody have any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a, a motion on RZ-14-30.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion regarding RZ-14-30 that we recommend to council a 60-day deferral, and they remand it back to the planning commission.
On which date specific, is it date specific?
60 days.
Second.
The question was, okay, we have a motion and a second.
I think it's best not to necessarily place a condition on the number of days. That would be explained to the council on the meeting of the 16th.
Okay.
But, but should we specify, should be date specified, or is...
No.
If, no?
Just recommend deferral.
Yes. All right, so do you want to restate your motion, please?
Friendly amendment?
Yeah.
You do that.
I would like to offer a friendly amendment to the original motion, that we recommend case RZ-1430 to be suspended and sent over to council to revert back to us after council have made a decision.
I will accept the friendly amendment.
So now do we have a second from somebody, somebody seconded?
I'll second.
I'll second. All right. So do we have any discussion on that? My only discussion is, did you get what you needed from us?
We made it through that, correct?
We made it through that? All right, so all in favor of the motion to recommend to city council basically a 60-day deferral, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so we got that, thank you. And yes, it is, we had that big discussion at the work session about what should the new wording be on that. All right, next item on the agenda is, is a, is ID-1589. It's a special land use permit 14-05. The Kroger company rezoning from neighborhood NS, neighborhood shopping to NS, neighborhood shopping for a special land use permit for an accessory fuel center, and...
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we pause while the rest of these folks leave, so we can have an accurate recording.
Okay.
And should we move some of those other folks in here, if they want to?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we, okay, good, good point. I want to see if we can fill in, and we'll take a, just say we are for a second, everybody.
Are there folks out there, so they're going to come in?
Folks in the lobby come in. Mr. Chairman, do you want to move for recess for three minutes?
We're going to stall. Can we move, can we, can we vote for a stall? Okay, I think we're, I think we're okay. All right, so Ben, will you just, yeah, let's proceed. Okay, Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The case before you is SLUP-1405. It's a request from Kroger, requesting to instruct an accessory fuel center associated with the existing primary use of a Kroger shopping, grocery. The subject property is currently zoned NS. The portion of the property in which they would be locating the gas station is 1.015 acres. As part of the request, there's going to be seven fueling pumps, in addition to 176 square foot prefabricated kiosk. Based upon staff's analysis, we felt that the existing, there are existing gas stations, the existing land use patterns found in association with the use that has been requested. Those uses are typically found in more higher intensive commercial zonings, typically C1 within the area, and also located within the intersections of major thoroughfares. In this case, Valero, as well as Texaco, they're located both at the intersection of Ashford-Dunwoodie Road and Johnson Ferry Road. And also, due to the proximity of the proposed use in relation to the residential uses that are existing there, we felt that the request would be incompatible. Staff has recommended denial. I believe the applicant has requested for a withdrawal, but just wanted to put that into the record, because that was part of the, the request that was given to you as the package that was also provided online.
Okay, thank you, Ben. So give us an indication. I saw, how many comment cards you, yeah, okay, more than, more than 10?
Probably over 70, close to 80.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to entertain, I mean, our normal procedure is 10 minutes, say, for the applicant, 10 minutes for those in support, and 10 minutes for those opposed. And we want to give everybody a fair chance, kind of get their thoughts gathered, their thoughts, you have more time. So we're not going to go for 70. We're going to ask people, we want people to speak. But I'll entertain a motion to extend the, the 10 minutes for each of the parties, if this commission would consider that.
Somebody else has to do it. I always do it.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we extend the time for consideration of this application for 10 minutes for applicant as well as those opposed.
So to clarify, that's 20 minutes for the applicant, 20 minutes for those in support, and 20 minutes for those opposed? Is that what I, that we were just saying, extend it beyond 10 minutes to?
Yes.
I'm sorry, is that what you meant?
I think, just to go ahead and...
Start that way?
Yes.
Okay, so we are, we have a motion to amend our procedures to start off with 20 minutes for each of the, each of the interested parties. Do I have a, a second on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, are you, are you going to remind folks that if they're repeating themselves and...
Yeah, yeah, so what we're, yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll, so we're going to start with 20 minutes. So again, what we're literally looking for is, we want everyone to speak, if you can speak. But obviously, you know, if everybody's 3 minutes, it's 70 minutes, we're going to be here till, you know, if that's what you want, I think most of us are willing to stick it out and hear, but what we're really looking for is information. And we want to know what you're thinking, so you can help us in our determinations and when we deliberate. So when you do get a chance to speak, it, it's okay, it's okay for you to come up and say, my name is, I live at, and I support, or I oppose for the same reasons as so-and-so you heard. I mean, it's okay. You don't have to use up all your time. You can do it fairly quickly for all of us. But we do want to hear you. We do want, if there's new information and you feel compelled, then we want to hear you if we can. So right now, you've got 20 minutes for each. We've got, we've got the motions, we've got the second. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe we voted.
No, actually, I'm saying, we have motion and a second, we've had the discussion, and now the, and now the vote. All in favor of this, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, so with help, we get this through. So with that, we'll ask the applicant or the representative to come up and speak for all or part of 20 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Doug Dillard with Wybbs and Noack, Curran, Wilco, and we represent Kroger. I'm going to be very brief in my introductory remarks and remain, and reserve my remaining time for rebuttal. I want to point out to you that I've given you tonight a handout, which has our response to the use permit criteria. It has aerial photograph of the existing center, existing neighborhood, and what is proposed. It also has a site plan that shows the dimensions and, and access issues, along with pedestrian walkways and proposed traffic signal. We have a landscape plan that shows how and what manner the property will be landscaped. And then finally, we have an actual photograph of what the property looks like today. We've asked for a withdrawal without prejudice. We've just been engaged in this property within, in this accident within the last couple of weeks. I was informed tonight that maybe you don't have jurisdiction to give us a withdrawal without prejudice. If that's the case, we object to that. I think that's violation of due process. But how, that's another fight for another day. If deferral is a better program for, for you, relative to giving us the ability to continue to work with the neighborhood, to see if there's some way that we can, can resolve this issue, then, then that's what we would, that's what we would suggest. I want you to think, though, as you look at this, as you look at this application, that this is a special land use permit within a neighborhood shopping district. It's not C1, which is how you, you would have the right to have a fuel facility in C1, and that's what exists at the intersection of Ashford-Dunwoodie and Johnson Ferry. But adjacent to that is neighborhood shopping, which provides basically most of the same types of uses that are permitted in C1, particularly when you're talking about grocery stores and hair salons and that kind of stuff. But as relates to fuel, local government has decided that you need a use permit. And within that use permit are 20 criteria that you need to, that you need to look at. And it's based on those criteria that, that the city council has said they want you to recommend to them, based on those 20 criteria, whether or not this application meets those criteria. We submit to you that your discretion is limited to a consideration of those criteria, because under the use permit, the council has decided that that's how and in what manner they want to determine whether or not a fuel, a fuel facility would be located in neighborhood shopping. So the council has limited their discretion and your discretion to those 20 criteria. Now, staff has, as is their custom, has done a very thorough job of going through each of those criteria and recommending denial. Okay? We have submitted to you tonight a response to that, and we obviously disagree with the conclusions that they've made. And one of the things that I think is very important to remember is that local government rules and regulations have got to relate to some sort of protection of the public health, safety, and welfare. And these 20 criteria deal with that. And we think those 20 criteria very, very easily deal with that. We will submit to you in rebuttal, a traffic study, a landscape plan, limit on hours of operation, limit on pumps, limits, limits that are not necessarily required in the ordinance, but which we, as a result of the interaction with the community and the complaints that they have had, have tried to address. And it's not enough for there to be opposition. It's not enough for the, for their folks not to want a gas station, particularly when you already got one. It's not enough for folks to be dissatisfied with the groceries Kroger sells. It's not enough for folks to say, I don't like the cleaners out there, therefore I don't want any, any gas out there. It's not enough for there to be any kind of decision or recommendation that you make that doesn't have some relationship to the overall protection of the public health, safety, and welfare. And I'm going to say this, for Kroger, we're here to provide a facility that's compatible with the neighborhood. We realize that there's opposition to that. But what we had asked for in asking for the withdrawal without prejudice is to give us an opportunity to continue to have dialogue. We've been, we've been engaged less than two weeks, so we've not been a part of the, part of the process. We understand there's a lot of opposition. And we also understand that that creates problems relative to how folks make decisions. We think that it would be very proper to ask, if I can't get a withdrawal without prejudice for a 60-day deferral, to give us an opportunity to meet with the neighborhood. So with the context and the background within which I know you understand how you're supposed to make these decisions, how does these rules and regulations affect the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare? Are there really traffic issues? Are there really landscape issues? Are there really hours of operation issues? Are there really, are there really volume issues? And what is the effect of this, of this property on, on adjacent properties when you've got a substation next door, an apartment development next door, an existing shopping center next door, and residences across a major thoroughfare that exist similarly across from existing gas stations at the intersection of Ashford-Dunwoodie and Johnson Ferry. So with that, I'd like to reserve my remaining time for rebuttal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And am I the only one who doesn't have a, I have pictures in mine.
It's all pictures.
It's all?
It's all pictures.
It's all pictures. There's no copy.
Was it supposed to be more than pictures?
Both of these are pictures.
Yeah, there are pictures, but there's supposed to be, I thought you said you had a response to every one of the criteria.
Well, we do, but I'm going to make that. I think that is in the first half. I guess I'll have to make them more early. Okay, thank you.
All right, so just, you know, for those who couldn't hear, Mr. Dillard said that when he provided this information to us, there was, he had a response to the criteria or what the staff had, and there were, there are photos in here, but no responses. That's all I was commenting on. Okay, so...
We have two speaker cards in support.
Okay, we have, so we'll ask for those, the two speakers.
It's Ed O'Connor.
Okay, and again, if you'll come up and introduce yourself and tell us your address. And again, as an individual, we're going to ask you to limit yourself to 3 minutes and the total time to 20, so, but...
My name's Ed O'Connor. I probably will have a lot of neighbors who hate me after this speech, but, you know...
But they, but they won't, they won't show that tonight.
But, you know, the reason is, I'm not opposed to this gas station, and I, I don't really like the process, the way everything went. But anyway, my name is Ed O'Connor. I'm a Cambridge Park resident. I live at 1544 Cattleston Way, and I'm a member of the Cambridge Park Civic Association. I've, have 19 years of retail development experience in metro Atlanta, and I'm a chairman of a local community improvement district. I support Kroger's efforts to withdraw without prejudice for their application for the SLUP or deferral, if that's so what it may be. Part of the process is, is in August, Kroger reached out to our neighborhood before they filed the SLUP application and requested a meeting with the Cambridge Park Civic Association to share with the community their proposed plan. Cambridge Park Board members, before having met with Kroger and understanding the scope of the project and how it could affect our neighborhood, or make it, you know, make recommendations that would make the project better, took it upon themselves to oppose the Kroger plan and started a petition a few days later at our annual dinner, again, before they had ever met with Kroger. This is not the process and how it should work. Neighbor should, neighborhood associations should meet with applicants, whether they're opposed to it or not, and then make recommendations before signing an opposition. Kroger's had two community meetings with the community to try to have constructive dialogue with the neighbors and answer questions and concerns. In my opinion, the Cambridge Park neighborhood has been misinformed by our neighbors through the process of scare tactics regarding a fuel center. There have been other misrepresentations blasted through next-door neighbor against, amongst the Cambridge Park and Hampton Hall neighborhood. I've spoken to many of my neighbors who do not oppose this use, but are reluctant to speak out. speak out for fear of being killed like I will probably be after this. Kroger runs a first-class operation when it comes to their fuel centers.
Everybody, you know, we're going to ask everybody, just hold for a second.
Okay.
Really need to ask you to.
I, I do think Kroger runs first. If, if, if you.
No, no, no. Just speak, speak to us.
All right.
And, and we're going to ask everybody to just respect.
Kroger runs a first-class operation when it comes to their fuel centers. I know firsthand because I go to them. Unlike some of the neighborhood choices our community has today that are dirty, sell drug paraphernalia, adult magazines, and have slot machines in the back of their store, I would love to see competition in our area and possibly have these businesses put out of business and replaced with possible restaurants. One of these gas stations, I can actually see from my back window. Other restaurant, or, you know, people have said that the gas stations will be, you know, if they go out of business, they'll be vacant. The Corner Pizza, which is on the corner of our, of our neighborhood, used to be a gas station. This is a prime area for those gas stations to be turned into restaurants in the future. Finally, there's no harm in allowing Kroger to withdraw without prejudice. It does not grant them approval, but requires more dialogue with the neighborhood. We need to be rational and continue the conversation with facts and not scare tactics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
Thomas DeGrace.
I'm sorry, give me the name again.
Thomas DeGrace.
DeGrace, okay, Mr. DeGrace.
Thank you. My name is Tom DeGrace. I live at 1284 Ashford Creek Way, within the Ashford Creek Townhome Community. It's a townhome community with 188 units. I'm a professional engineer for 29 years, as a side note, and I'm in favor of the project, regardless of the withdrawal or the deferral, for a couple of reasons. One is safety. I've personally witnessed children trying to cross Johnson's Ferry Road, pretty much right at the location of the current, of the proposed signal, with great difficulty, even though there's a crosswalk there. I feel like a traffic signal, controlled civilization for pedestrian, for pedestrian accesses would benefit very much. Also, I personally shop at Kroger, and I live north of the, of the property on Ashford Dunwoodie Road, and it's very difficult for me, as well as all my neighbors to the north of this intersection, to make a left-hand turn onto Ashford Dunwoodie Road from the Starbucks, Starbucks side. It, it would benefit me personally to be able to make a controlled left-hand turn out of the new driveway and the new signal, go up to Ashford Dunwoodie and Johnson's Ferry Road intersection, and make a controlled left-hand turn north on Ashford Dunwoodie Road. Have you ever noticed people trying to make a left-hand turn out of the entrance near the McDonald's? It's, it's, it's very difficult to combat the traffic heading south and north on Ashford Dunwoodie Road. And then finally, my concern is the economic viability of this shopping center. And if Kroger feels like it's going to improve their economic viability, which I agree because I'm a Kroger shopper and I would love to buy gas from Kroger, I think it's important for the, for the neighborhood to realize the repercussions of the drastic possibility of Kroger pulling out of this shopping center and creating a huge vacant hole in the shopping center, and the repercussions of the satellite stores that would follow. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. DeGrace, is that it?
DeGrace.
DeGrace. Thank you, sir. Okay, Ben, do you have anybody else?
No more speaker card in support.
Okay. So, do we have any cards in, you know, in opposition?
Just a few.
Just a few, okay. And again, we're going to ask everybody, come up, tell us your name, tell us where you live, and limit your time to three minutes, if you would, and move on to the next.
Lindley Jones.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Lindley Jones. I live at 3516 Stratfield Drive Northeast. I'm Neighborhood Affairs Chair for the Cambridge Park Civic Association, and I'm a trial lawyer of 23 years. Cambridge Park represents over 220 households in Brookhaven, and we oppose granting Kroger a special land use permit to build this mega station. If we could pull up on the Elmo here, the camera, this exhibit I have, both the neighborhood associations representing the communities that are closest to this gas station strongly believe that this mega gas station is contrary to our neighborhood's character as a pedestrian, family-friendly, walkable neighborhood, and more specifically, contrary to the designation of our neighborhood as neighborhood shopping zoning, and contrary to the comprehensive plan that governs all of Brookhaven. As you can see in this room tonight, and as you've also heard and read in recent weeks, the vast majority of nearby residents oppose the grant of this SLUP. When Kroger first asked Cambridge Park to find out if its residents wanted a gas station, and that's how this began, we reached out to all of our residents through the email listserv that serves our neighborhood, and we heard back resoundingly, "No, we don't want it." In less than 48 hours, 100 people signed a letter, and we sent that to Kroger and said, "You asked, this is our answer." But Kroger has proceeded anyway. Kroger's gas station is not permitted by current zoning laws unless the city grants a SLUP, of course, because this area of Cambridge Square is designated neighborhood shopping. It is not zoned commercial for a gas station, it's zoned neighborhood shopping. And what I've popped up there is the law on the Elmo there. And as you can see, one of the primary purposes of neighborhood shopping zoning is to ensure that the area does not become a major commercial center, but that new development is designed to meet the needs of, and this is a quote, "the service needs of the immediate neighborhood area." Kroger admits that it intends to serve 18,000 drivers at this filling station. That's not the immediate area, that's almost 40% of the entire population of Brookhaven. So we oppose that, and this gas station is designed to serve customers from the entire north end of town, from their Georgetown store all the way down to the Cherokee Plaza store. Now, that's not neighborhood shopping either. Now, I've got another exhibit here that is the comprehensive plan our city has recently adopted. The proposed gas station is also inconsistent with this comprehensive plan that envisions our city as a national model for a walkable urban community. This gas station is an inherently automobile-related use by definition, and there is nothing that can be done to make it pedestrian-friendly. The mega station will be built directly in the footpath from our neighborhoods to Blackburn Park, which pursuant to the master parks and recreation plan that the city has just adopted, is being redeveloped for the use of the neighbors. Well, this, the heavy traffic of this gas station would block that altogether. My final point is that this gas station fails to meet those SLUP criteria, and we provided you all early on, you may recall, this document, we sent it to each and every one of you, it addresses item by item the SLUP criteria and why this gas station doesn't meet the SLUP criteria. So we have, in fact, addressed that, and we appreciate your consideration of that and the city planners. This mega gas station is just way, way too close to longstanding residential development, and we believe that if, if this SLUP were granted, it'd be a violation of our Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment rights, and for these reasons, among others, we ask that Kroger's application be denied. Thank you all.
Thank you, Lindley. Everybody, I know, I know, you'd love to do it, and I'd love to have you, you know, but we just, I know I do this a lot when I come up here. Okay, any next?
Mary Ellen Brigham.
Go on to this, please. Yeah, Kelly, Kelly will get it for you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ellen Brigham, and I have been asked to speak on behalf of the Hampton Hall Association, and I live at 1175 Hampton Hall Drive and have for over 10 years. I have been asked to speak today because of my expertise in retail, shopping center development, and marketing, and my many years teaching the subjects on the faculty of the University of Connecticut. I have been asked to speak to four key areas. Kroger is proposing to invest large sums of money in the creation of this mega station. Let me be clear, they are going to do everything in their power, marketing, sales, pricing, to bring more customers to the station. Not neighborhood folks, but customers all over the area who will be using their Kroger points. This will bring additional outside traffic into the neighborhood shopping center. Second point, traffic concerns are real, palatable, and scary. The roadways of Johnson Ferry, Ashford Dunwoodie, and Donaldson are currently operating at a D level, A being excellent, and they are projected to have a failing grade by 2040. That is without this type of development. And I want to make it clear, my standpoint is this type of development, not development overall. The Kroger application proposes an additional traffic signal on Johnson Ferry Road at Wadsworth, Wadston Way. This additional signal only makes a tapped system worse. It is evidently cannot, or would be very difficult to coordinate that light with the lights on Ashford Dunwoodie, so therefore it is another stopping point on Johnson Ferry. The Kroger plan shows the widening of Johnson Ferry, putting the road and traffic closer to residents' property lines. This will impact the town of Brookhaven's goal of making the city walkable with sidewalks and crosswalks. Emergency vehicles that must go to the local hospitals already face severe traffic issues on Johnson Ferry. Additional traffic and ingress and egress only serves to magnify these life-threatening issues. Market saturation is a huge decision factor in real estate site proposals. In this case, there is no neighborhood, or for that matter, area, need whatsoever for additional gas stations. We currently have six stations, Valero, BP, Texaco, Costco, QT, and Marathon, within five driving minutes, with two of them within .2 miles of the proposed site. And then my last point goes to residential. You hold that there? Okay. This is a Google map taken right from Ariel of Google, of the thing, whatever, I got it yesterday. Put it together. If you look at the map, the red is our neighborhood center, the box with the question mark is approximately where this fuel center would be, the power center is in yellow, the roadways are highlighted in yellow, and our parks are in green, and the lakes are in, in blue. Everything else around this property is residential, from the north, south, east, and west. This is a residential area. The other issue we have is that it is next to a power station. That is a concern, putting tons of fuel next to a power station. Maybe nothing ever happened, but maybe it will. Finally, when retail development is done well, the needs and concerns of these encircling neighbors are strongly considered because ultimately, businesses need shopping neighbors, and neighbors need great businesses. This is not a great business, not a needed business by the neighborhoods, and not a means to a successful and profitable, profitable business venture. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brigham. We appreciate it. Ben?
Tim Scarborough.
Good evening. I'm Tim Scarborough. I'm the Vice President of the Cambridge Park Civic Association. I live at 3519 Stratfield Drive, so I can literally throw a rock at this site. First of all, I'd like to thank Ben and his team for upholding the vision of the comprehensive plan. When we look at it, you know, this was what the city of Brookhaven is all about, so I really appreciate, as an architect and a planner, appreciate everything that Ben and his team has been doing. What we think of is this is about health, safety, and welfare. What we're seeing is a, well, they call it seven pumps, it's really 14, when you count two pumps on each side, a pump, a fuel center, a fueling element on each side, so there's really 14 pumps there. That's, that's huge. This, the site is just really too close to our neighborhood and our houses to really be of value. When we look at the amount of fumes and exhaust that's going to be generated, we've seen what happens at CityWalk, which is a smaller station that Kroger operates. We found that you had to be at least 70 yards away to kind of get away from those fumes. Houses are a mere 50 yards away from the pumps on this one. So it, it's really a concern from us for a health and safety issue. We also are concerned about the runoff, potential runoff. Now, there are a lot of things in place that will prevent some of these things, but we know spills occur. We're concerned with the watershed. We know that the existing retention pond is probably too small, was probably not developed at the time of new standards. We know that this watershed that this is going to be going into feeds into Little Nancy Creek, which we know is on the EPA watch list. So this is really a concerning issue for us, and we don't see the need for these additional hazards. From a safety perspective, this, this idea that Mary Ellen pointed out of the, the substation being right adjacent to it, you know, while we don't have any specific knowledge from Georgia Power about how that would be affected, we do know that just from anecdotal information and other concerns, static electricity is a major issue at any fueling center, and having one that close just doesn't seem appropriate as a, a use for us. We also don't believe that from a, a safety perspective, that the, the traffic light that's proposed is really going to be a safe environment. It's right at the only exit and entrance on Johnson Ferry from Cambridge Park. So when you add in all the additional traffic that's coming in and out of there, both from the fueling station and from the park, our, our neighborhood itself, and then you couple in with that the pedestrians that would be going across there, we really think that's going to be a major issue. They have said that they're going to synchronize the lights there with the lights at Ashford Dunwoodie, but I don't think they really understand the complexities of trying to make those intersections work and make them safe. Finally, it's just the amount of traffic and the size of this fueling center that you don't find it in a residential neighborhood and development. They're calling Johnson Ferry a major thoroughfare, but it's a two-lane road. It really is a neighborhood road, and you typically find these large fueling centers on major roads at exits off the interstate. So I agree with everyone that's been speaking so far that we really have to oppose this. It just does not fit into the nature of our community. I would also like to pass out these talking points, if I may.
Make sure you give Kelly one, two down there. All right, I think he's done. All right. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. All right, so how much time do we have left?
Seven minutes, 21 seconds.
Seven minutes, 21 seconds, and you've got a list, a stack, so.
Several, yeah, a lot of them are just comments for the record.
Yeah, so Ben will start calling names. If you want to come up and speak, again, if you have something new to add, we'd like to hear it. If you just want to state your name and address and say, you know, "I agree," or whatever, or "I support" or "oppose," we'll do, we'll let you do that, and we'll see how, you know, and see where we go in seven minutes and 21 seconds.
It's a little hard to read.
Remember now, the applicant has the, you know, rebuttal time, so.
It's a little hard to read, I believe, is Kathy Glenn.
Mr. Chairman, again, last, last time you tried to have Ben call several people in a row, can we try that again, maybe?
Yeah, sure. Call the next one, too, if you, so if you're.
Or next several.
Robert Purser. Rick Ferguson.
Again, so if you want to speak, just kind of queue up, so when he calls your name.
Mrs. Bradford.
That's it for now.
Okay. Go. Introduce yourself, and you're it.
My name is Kathy Glenn, and I'm the Civic Affairs Chair for the Hampton Hall Civic Association, and I've lived at 1785 Johnson Ferry Road for 34 years. The neighborhood shopping designation encourages redevelopment for neighborhood uses and not to make a struggling store profitable, as the Kroger representative told us. There is no demand for a fuel center. A walkable area is encouraged by shops and restaurants. Since we've had sidewalks on Johnson Ferry Road, there are always people walking to and from the shopping center. The majority of us voted for the city of Brookhaven because we wanted to participate in the destiny of Brookhaven. Let's keep Brookhaven. I'll tell you a little story. About 15 years ago, I lived in Lawrenceville, and I had a client that actually was on Johnson Ferry. And I would come down 85, and I would get off 285 at Peachtree, and I would come down and cut across Ashford Dunwoody, and then I would cut across Johnson Ferry. And the majority of the traffic that we see in the morning and in the afternoon is not community traffic. It is people cutting off of 285, which is exactly what the fuel station is looking to take advantage of. And this fuel station is not going to limit this problem. So from a traffic and a safety standpoint, that's my biggest concern. When we look at this two-lane road that, on the weekends, at 2:00 in the afternoon, is extremely peaceful, but at 4:00 to 6:00 in the evening, and from 7:00 to 8:30 in the morning, it is a freeway. And this station is going to do nothing but increase that traffic on this road. And when we talk about safety and, you know, kids and communities and school buses, I'm not really sure that's really what we're looking for. We've already got a problem with that intersection. We're already spending money to try to upgrade it. How is this not going to be a negative impact to something we're already trying to cure? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Purser, was it?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
My name is Rick Ferguson. I live at 1367 Ragley Hall Road in Cambridge Park. I'm not sure if this is correct, but I was told that the expansion of this intersection would cut into the neighborhood and take down the large stone designation for our neighborhood. Something to think about, the magnitude of this intersection. I'm not sure if that's correct or not, just something to bring to your attention. I would also like to say that if people are concerned about the intersection and walking through, and children and such, please know that recently, new lights were put in, new push buttons to allow people to cross back and forth. Third, I don't believe putting in a service station would help people cross the street. I don't think you need a service station to help people cross the street. If you want to fix the intersection, you can fix the intersection without a service station. In addition, if people talk about the number of service stations, we have a good number of service stations. What we really need there, in real estate, you have what's called a gap analysis, what do you need? What we really need there is neighborhood retail, a floor shop. You know, maybe an Ace Hardware we could walk to, that type of retail, opposed to a mega center. Also, I don't believe you would find this type of center in the middle of Dunwoody. I think they control their neighborhood, make it as walkable as possible, and I think that's what the neighborhood would like here. I echo everything that was said, especially by the first three folks. I echo that, and I please hope that you deny this request and dismiss it with prejudice. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ferguson. All right, Ben, why don't you call five or six more names, and we'll just, the next five or six people, again, if you don't want to speak, if you're willing to give up your slot, we're willing to let you do it.
Martha Peake, Carol Craddock, Michael Connor, Gail Davison, Pete Gabrielle, and R.I. Vetchon.
Thank you. My name is Martha Peake, and I live at 1169 Ragley Hall Road. I've lived in these two neighborhoods for 41 years. I just support everything that's been said in opposition to this, but I have a question, one quick question for the planning department, for Mr. Song.
Yeah, unfortunately, in our process, you can't ask, at this point, you cannot ask questions of us or the staff.
Oh, okay.
It's, I know, it seems stilted, but it is.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your consideration.
Martha's one of the few people who's lived there longer than I have, I think.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mike Connor. I live at 1292 Ragley Hall Road. We've been here about 18 years. I support everything that's been said prior to this, and I just want to add one additional thought. This is a community neighborhood which values the nature of the surroundings that it's established. This is a community that, in the '90s, voted down an Olympic tennis center. If we can vote down an Olympic tennis center, we should be able to block a gas station. Thank you.
I know, it's hard to, it's hard to be quiet. It is for us, too.
My name is Pete Cabrali. I'll try to be very quick. You know, one of the things that was mentioned by the council early on was that you have, or one of the engineers at their apartment complexes, condos and so forth, down Johnson Ferry, down Ashford Dunwoody, and that's exactly right. But you know what? That also is part of the reason why the city of Brookhaven exists, because we were tired of having some mega structure dictate to us what kind of life we're going to have, how much traffic it's going to bring to the neighborhood. This is an opportunity for us to keep a neighborhood, try to reduce the traffic in some impossible way, and to keep safety in our neighborhood. My wife and I have been in this, I live on Stratfield Drive in the circle, and we've been in the neighborhood since 1976. We had the opportunity to move about eight, nine years ago. We moved from one house in the neighborhood to another house in the neighborhood because it is a good neighborhood. It's a community. It's where the neighbors care for each other, and they care for each other's kids, and we always have that in mind. So, and that's why we're all here tonight, and I think you can understand that it's a pretty strong feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabrali.
I'm Reggie Vaishawne. I live at 1414 Epping Forest Drive in Cambridge Park. I've lived there since 1978. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Georgia and have been for 40 years and have served as a science and technical advisor to the homeland security. I can tell you two things. Having that park, that fueling park, next to that transmission station is not advisable from a technical standpoint, from a safety standpoint. If you introduce 18,000 more cars onto Johnson Ferry Road, you're going to have a real calamity with the ambulances that are trying to get up and down that road as it exists now. Additionally, we, before the city of Brookhaven, we voted down the soccer field that was going to be on Johnson Ferry because of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaishawne. All right, so what do we have? And again, I've got a comment to make, but I assume we have lots and lots more cards.
Well, yes, but I believe a lot of the speaker cards are just comments that would...
Okay, so here's what, because I want everyone to remember that we are going to give Mr. Dillard the remainder of his time, plus all the time that y'all are speaking. I mean, we're not going to take, and I don't want to go too far, because we want to be careful that we're not repeating ourselves, and we want to be fair to Mr. Dillard and Kroger, and, you know, it's a point at which they're not going to have much to say as well. So maybe with just a quick show of hands, kind of see who feels that they really have something they want to say to us. Just one, two. Okay, so...
People in the back.
Oh, and see if there's anybody in the back, 34. So maybe if anybody wants to...
Mr. Chairman, not to interrupt...
Yeah, no, please.
In terms of the amount of time that we have extended up to this point, I believe, and again, it's up to the planning commission, but I believe a lot of the comments that has been shared has been either supported, from what has been shared initially by other folks that spoke earlier on in the opposition phase. I don't necessarily know if there's anything new. I understand that, but also, the 20 minutes that has been extended has elapsed. The applicant does have time for rebuttal. If you are seeking to extend time, it would be another motion that would be upheld by the planning commission.
Well, I would suggest, and we'll see what anybody else wants to do, I suggest, I mean, we had one point, you know, maybe we can't limit it down to just, we had, what, we have three or four? Show me hands again that said they really, one, two, three, three. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, they're all...
And how many have said back there they want?
No.
Okay, so, so three more people?
Five minutes.
Anybody entertain a motion for...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to allow five more minutes for each side.
Okay, so would you limit the amount of time for each speaker, or...
Limit it to a minute.
Okay. So we have a motion that would extend this last time, five more minutes with one minute per speaker. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on it?
No.
Okay, all in favor of, I say, five minutes with one minute per speaker, and we're going to hear Mr. Dillard after that. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, just call the three names.
We don't know them.
Yeah, Ben, would you call?
We don't know them.
Okay, don't know who, okay. Well, the people who raised your hand, three people raised their hand, just come up, kind of line up. And again, one minute apiece, please. And, because we want to be, again, we absolutely want to be fair, and... Right here, yeah. Just state your name and address, and tell us what.
Good evening. My name is Sharamie Dunlap. I live at 1416 Stratfield Circle, and I raise children in Cambridge Park, and they like to ride their bicycles, or we walk our dogs together as a family, to this shopping center. And if you would please put the map back up, if you will notice, right now, the undeveloped property to the side is a perfect location for us to walk from Johnson's Ferry safely to the shopping center so that we may shop, so that we may go have dinner at one of the local restaurants, or enjoy dessert at Rita's, or do a quick pickup at Kroger's. If this mega shopping center, or, I'm sorry, mega gas station goes into that lot, where are we going to walk to safely get to the shopping center? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunlap. Appreciate it.
Yes, my name is Brian Brown. I live at 3495 Waddison Way. I just have two quick comments. One is, there was discussion about deferral and withdrawal. None of the factors that we've talked about tonight are going to change. The community's going to be there, the, all the safety concerns are still going to be there, so I would request that that not be considered. The other thing is that during his rebuttal, he may, the fine attorney may talk about a survey that was taken at Kroger. I took a little picture of a thing which says, "We want your feedback, and we're going to give you 50 fuel points if you fill it out." So if he does mention a survey, realize that's a little skewed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You used to do this at the kid's soccer...
Yes, my name is Mike Holmes. I live at 1088 Warren Hall. Along with my wife, we're co-presidents of the Hampton Hall Homeowners Association. We sent an email to the 169 homes within our neighborhood. We received zero responses in support, and each and every response we had was in opposition to it. So I think that is very representative of what our neighborhood thinks and feels about this, aside from all the comments given tonight. So I'd like to say I'm in support of everything that's been brought up in opposition of it. With one final, maybe simple, simple comment, a gas station by its very nature, particularly the Kroger footprint, is not walkable. You go to a Kroger gas station, you've seen the other ones in the area, and it's designed to drive your car into and leave. So it has, it has no representation around the concept of a walkable neighborhood. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate it. Okay, so I asked Mr. Dillard to come back up and speak. I want to thank everybody. You know, you were very respectful. I want to continue to be that way. We heard everybody. This is very different than some of the other municipalities or counties, I think, where things have been much more rigid. We've tried to listen to everybody and get everybody, give everybody a chance. So with that, Mr. Dillard, would you, you have 18, 18 minutes and 14 seconds.
Just to make you feel at ease, I doubt that I'll take 18 minutes, okay? But first of all, you know, we've had, we've had a lot of people get up here and opine about various things. We had a retail expert that got up here and started talking about traffic. You know, it's not about, it's not about traffic. You can't deny a use permit based on increased traffic. The law of Georgia since 1961 has been very clear, the zoning application cannot be denied, and it's the, it's a case that came out of downtown Atlanta. You can't deny a rezoning based on traffic. Flynn versus DeKalb County talked about how, you know, it's not about increased traffic. Local government's supposed to work with the property owner to achieve, not necessarily the highest and best use, but just a reasonable use. If putting a gas fueling facility in neighborhood shopping was not an appropriate use, then the board, the city council, in adopting the ordinance, would not have set the criteria that they set for a use permit. Now, we can argue whether or not requiring a use permit for a gas facility when a restaurant or something else that might generate a lot more traffic doesn't require a use permit. We can argue about that, and we would, we would challenge those criteria. Well, I would also submit to you, and I'm getting ready to call a traffic expert up here, we've done a traffic study. The neighborhood has not done a traffic study. They've opined about what it was going to do and whether or not it was good or not, okay? Johnson Ferry Road is a major thoroughfare. Ashford Dunwoody Road is a major thoroughfare. At the intersection of those two roadways, there are existing gas stations. Across the street is a Texaco station. I mean, it's not like there's not gas facilities already in this neighborhood. And it's not like the presence of these, these facilities have caused a depreciation or decline in the property values of these neighborhoods. Because as a matter of fact, if you look at the intersection of Ashford Dunwoody Road and Johnson Ferry, and the neighborhood that backs up to it, the distances that they're talking about from our facility, okay, are the same. And the value of those homes have not gone down. The proximity of folks who live there, who want to be in close proximity to shopping, et cetera, where maybe they don't have to drive their car so far, suggesting that maybe they don't walk to the Kroger, or they don't walk across the street to the pizza place or wherever it might be. The fact that you've got facilities that are available indicates that there's a minimum impact on the, on the transportation stuff. Having said that, I'm going to call on Abdul Amir with A&amp;R Engineering, who's done a study that's been submitted to staff, and I'm going to let him reach his conclusions as quickly as possible, Abdul. And then, and then I'm going to go through the criteria, not all the criteria, because some of the criteria staff agrees with, we agree with the staff on some of the criteria. I'm just going to go through the criteria where we've got an issue that I think you need to consider, and then I'm going to talk about our request for a withdrawal and/or a deferral. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My name is Abdul Amir with A&amp;R Engineering. I'm a traffic engineer. Was engaged to do a detailed traffic study for this project. We were asked by city staff to include the intersections of Ashford Dunwoody Road and Johnson Ferry Road, as well as Donaldson Drive. So it was a very comprehensive study. We also conducted a signal warrant study at the proposed entrance to the fuel center. And the recommendations of the study were to signalize the entrance and install an eastbound left turn lane for the entering traffic making a left turn from Johnson Ferry Road, and also to provide an interconnect from the proposed traffic signal to Ashford Dunwoody Road. It was, the information provided to us by the city's consultant, the proposed improvements of the intersection of Ashford Dunwoody Road and Johnson Ferry Road were included in the study. And there was a lot of discussion or comments made about city of Brookhaven's comprehensive transportation plans and levels of service. I think some of that information was inaccurate. I printed just today from the website some pages from city's comprehensive transportation plan. The section of Johnson Ferry Road here is reported in the document as currently operating at level of service C, and in the year 2040, it's reported to operate at level of service D. So that's, both of those levels of services are acceptable according to the definitions in the comprehensive plan. I printed, just today, from the website, some pages from city's comprehensive transportation plan. The section of Johnson Ferry Road here is reported in the document as currently operating at level of service C. And in the year 2040, it's reported to operate at level of service D. So, that's, both of those levels of services are acceptable according to the definitions in the comprehensive plan itself. My traffic impact study demonstrates that the impact of this proposed fuel center is insignificant, and with the proposed recommendations to mitigate the impacts, all intersection study will continue, will operate at acceptable levels of service. With regard, with regards to pedestrian safety at this intersection, a signalized intersection offers significantly higher pedestrian safety for purposes of those pedestrians crossing Johnson Ferry Road. We will have push buttons, marked crosswalks, signals where pedestrians can cross safely. So, there's day and night difference between crossing something as busy as Johnson Ferry Road for a pedestrian without any protections. The signal definitely will be a, a safety provision, as well as, with the continued increase in traffic on Johnson Ferry Road in the future years, exiting out of the neighborhood will become more and more difficult. So, this traffic signal will provide them a safe green light to get out and as well as turn into the center. So, I believe that the parcel under question, if a fuel center doesn't go there, something else, any permissible use under this land use category can go in there. For example, a bank could go in there, a restaurant could go in there, and that itself will generate some traffic. So, we're not looking at the traffic a fuel center will generate. We really need to look at the differential traffic between what is permissible versus what is a fuel center, which is not much at all, specifically because a fuel center has, according to established data from thousands of data points, 50% of the traffic for a fuel center is passed by, meaning it's already on the road. It's not coming to this facility for the purpose of fueling, fueling itself. In addition to that, and that data is for a general gas station, like a racetrack or a quick trip. Fuel center gas stations located in Kroger are specifically known to have mixed-use reductions on top of the pass-by reductions. And mixed-use reductions are customers coming to grocery shopping that also go fuel. So, not all trips are new trips that come to the center. I would like to reserve rest of the time for Mr. Dillard and be available to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The, the criteria which is addressed by the staff, I want to point out that the use permit anticipates that gas stations would be approved if these criteria are met. The code doesn't say that you've got to meet all of them. Code doesn't say you've got to meet a majority of them. The code doesn't say you've got to meet two of them. What, what it does say is that you've got to consider the criteria. And within that, you've got to determine whether or not the criteria have been met to the extent that it doesn't adversely affect the public safety, health, and welfare of this community. You know the community. You know what, you know what's around this property. I have, I've zoned property on Donaldson Road. I've zoned apartments on Ashford Dunwoodie. I've zoned St. Joseph's Hospital. You know, I mean, there's, there's been a lot of non-residential and higher-density residential activity around this intersection for a long time. This intersection has been and will continue to be a problem until it's reconfigured, okay? But where you come into Ashford Dunwoodie and then you split again, you got a little five-point situation, then you naturally have a problem. But we're set back away from that. And the reason that Kroger wants to consider selling gasoline on this property is because of the existing transporta, existing traffic and the existing residential population that exists in close proximity to this facility. And it's not right to sit here and talk about how you ought not to have a fuel center when you've got four or five other fuel centers in close proximity to this property and to this neighborhood. The other thing is, I think that you, you, you look at the opportunity where we come in and we make this improvement, and we actually improve the intersection. We actually provide traffic, a traffic light, which is needed today that the city obviously can't afford to put. We provide pedestrian crosswalks. We provide continuation of the sidewalk. We provide landscaping that currently doesn't exist. And I got to point out to you that we've got shopping center on one side, we got a Georgia Power, Power Station, Substation, whatever you call it, on one side, and we've got a multifamily apartment complex on the backside. And then we've got this neighborhood that's across Johnson Ferry. And I submit to you, three out of the four property owners that are adjacent to this property have not appeared before you tonight to object to this application. And I think that's important. If we're going to count heads and count noses and all that kind of thing, which I'm suggesting you don't do, but if you are going to do it, then I'm going to say that three-fourths of the property owners that are closer in, closer proximity to this property than any of these neighbors have no opposition to it. And they've not expressed that, and they've not been here tonight. Now, we realize the concerns that, that they have. We realize that while we've tried to address these issues, there still might be some things that we might be able to do. We've provided access. We've provided improved access. We've talked about a traffic light. We've talked about a crosswalk. We've talked about improving pedestrian access along Johnson Ferry Road. We've also talked about landscaping and what it's going to look like. We've talked about limit of operation, hours of operation. We've also talked about the limit of the number of pumps that we would actually have on the property. You know, we've, we've tried to address those, those issues. The neighborhood has been uninterested, obviously, in discussing those to any, any extent that would lead to some sort of fruitful compromise. We think that at that point, there is a role that you can play in this whole process. And that is that you can say, "Hey, look, you know, we've got a use permit provisions that call for allowance of this facility within this zoning district. The staff disagrees with us relative to whether we have met those." We've got neighborhood opposition that has really not submitted anything concrete to you relative to why you should deny this. It's just opinion and conjecture. What we're suggesting is that with your leadership, you could try to convene a way that we could try to compromise to do those things that we might not have thought about, and to see whether or not there's some way that we can make this facility more compatible with the neighborhood. Otherwise, we feel very strongly that we have satisfied the criteria as set forth under the use permit. And as I said, there's, there's, there's some 20 of them that we've gone, gone through. But just in, in a brief, brief point of view, we talk about the comp plan. The current comp plan was adopted on the 18th of November, so it doesn't apply. Previous comp plan applies, okay? And we're consistent with the previous comp plan. The, we, we, we challenged the, the failure to approve it based on constitutional provisions. As Lyndon got up here and talked about the Fourth, Fifth, and Fourteenth Amendment to the Constitution, you know, for us to be denied the right to put this facility under provisions and criteria that are met by, by this ordinance, you know, we're the ones that are suffering the taking, not the neighborhood. We're the ones that are being, we're, we're the ones that are having a valuable type of property right taken from us without due process. We're the ones that have the procedural issues that, that are being contested here tonight. So, I'm just asking that you provide us some, some leadership. The traffic concerns we've, we've, we've adopted, surrounding properties are not zoned residential. They're zoned NS, C1, and RM. Only residential properties are across Johnson Ferry. And, and the thing, thing that I think that it's important is that as you look at the photographs that we have submitted to you, I think they tell, it tells a story. It tells the story of what kind of landscaping we're going to put out there that we don't have today. It shows you what exists out there today. It also shows you the, the, the way in which we are suggesting that this property be developed, and none of the commercial activity, none of the neighborhood shopping, the existing Valero or Texaco or other gas stations that are in close proximity to this neighborhood have been developed with the landscaping or the, or the environmental sensitivity that we're suggesting. And with that, I think that, that the, the criteria have been satisfied. And if you look at the aerial under one, tab one, that I've given you, we're all on the north side of Johnson Ferry Road. The residential is all on the south side of Johnson Ferry Road. And non-residential exists on the north side, and I guess it's the east side of Ashford Dunwoodie Road. All within the distance of these residences that they're complaining about as far as this gas facility is concerned. And, and the, as you come around the turn at the intersection of Ashford Dunwoodie and, and Johnson Ferry, as you well know, you've got a strip center, you've got a drugstore, and to get to Blackman Park, you've got to pass three gas stations. So, we submit that to put this facility in between a shopping center and a Georgia Power substation and an apartment complex is, is certainly not adverse to the public health, safety, and welfare. It's a use that's contemplated by the zoning ordinance. It's a use that we have satisfied relative to all the criteria that have been, that you're asked to consider. And the staff does not necessarily disagree with all of, of our positions, but it's important to note that the drawing power of a fuel center is nowhere near that of a movie theater, nowhere near that of a regional shopping mall or similar destination use in which potential covenant, customers would travel and would otherwise be permitted under the neighborhood zoning classification. With that, we would ask, you recommend with the oral prejudice, if you can't do that, deferral. And if you don't do that, we ask that you approve this application. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard. Did he use all of his time? He probably... No, we appreciate, we do appreciate that. We appreciate everybody's input. We appreciate, I know it's hard for everybody to, you know, but it's, this is what we're here for, to, to work through these things. So, with that, I'm going to close the public comment section and open it up for the commission to ask questions of anyone who has spoken or the staff, and then we'll, when we kind of wear ourselves out asking questions, we'll let you know what we, what we conclude. So, let's start on, let's start on here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to go to you, Caitlin.
I have, I have a couple of questions. I'd like to ask one and then gather my thoughts on the other. We've heard so much. So, my first question for staff is regarding a special land use permit, if it is recommended that we deny, or it's recommended to council that they deny it, and then it's ultimately denied, how, how long, again, is it until a subsequent application can be submitted? And how different does that need to be? If it's completely different, or if you could explain that briefly, Ben?
Yeah, generally speaking, you're referring to the successive application clause within the zoning ordinance. Generally speaking, it's 24 months. The applicant does have the ability to petition the city council after six months for them to bring it up, or to submit for a new special land use permit without waiting the full 24-month period.
And just a brief follow-up to that. Can it be, what if a, what about any other rezoning not related to a land use permit? Is that also barred during those 24 months?
No, it's not. In this, in this particular case, we're specifically dealing with a special land use permit for a specific use. So, another rezoning application would not be barred.
Okay. Thank you.
Question for staff. Ben, does that successive application clause that you just mentioned also apply to withdrawals with prejudice?
Let me try that again.
Yeah, sorry, my mic was off. I was asking about the successive application clause, if it also applies if the SLUP today is withdrawn with prejudice.
They're huddling over here if you don't, you know.
Yeah, no, sorry. I just had to confer with our city attorney. It's, our, the language provided in our ordinance is not very specific to with prejudice or without prejudice, per se, for our ordinance.
Okay. I've been educated. Thank you.
Okay. John, you want to come down on this one?
Nope, I'm good.
All right. We're alternating today.
All right. First, for staff, in terms of what are the permitted uses within the neighborhood shopping district that would require the SLUPS? And as part of that, curious, do we have a definition of gasoline station versus a fuel center in our, in our code?
Well, in terms of the, those uses that are, that require a special land use permit under the NS zoning district is a telecommunications tower antenna, alcohol outlets, except as accessory to a major retail establishment, and automobile gas stations. And we are looking at the definition currently.
Okay. All right. And then, I mean, it's a little more extensive as far as all of the total uses that are allowed within neighborhood shopping that you would not require a permit, correct?
Correct. It's, let's see, quickly going down there, it's probably... There's probably about 50 items that are listed as permissible uses under the NS zoning district. And also, to get back to your first question, there is no definition of a fuel center. We do have a definition of a, of a gas station.
And within the gas station, does it, does that include any particular amount of pumps, or is it just simply any facility that provides gasoline on a retail basis?
There is no specifics in the number.
Okay.
Want to come back?
Yeah.
Good help? Okay. Then we'll go over here, and then we'll come back, and we're going to swap around. So, John?
Yes. I have a question for staff. We heard both the applicant and the resident speak to the criterias. Is that included in this packet?
Yes, it is. It's actually part of the staff report.
The page, okay.
So, in your packet, it would begin from page 163. And if you recall, for our typical rezoning, we have, I believe, five to six criterias. For SLUPS, we do have up to 19 criterias. It begins on 163 through 167.
Bert, do you have anything? Gathered your thoughts now?
More for the applicant, I guess.
Okay.
I actually have a question for the applicant, Chairman.
Yeah, let's go to Bert first. You got the applicant? Okay.
Right. This question for, for the applicant. One of the comments that was made, or we heard, was that this would generate or 18,000 different, or cars or trips, something like that. And I wanted to follow up as far as you, you had your traffic engineer, and he was discussing his proposal. I understood it sounded like the, there was enough traffic that was going to be generated that was going to warrant having to, you hit the thresholds for installing signals, additional traffic signals on that. But it wasn't clear to me exactly how many... But it wasn't clear to me exactly how many new trips are we talking about that you've, that Kroger, that you are self-forecasting?
I think that, I think the 18, I'm gonna let Abdul address that, Mr. Levy, but I think the 18,000 is the market area, you know, the household, the people in that market area. You know, both these roads are classified as major thoroughfares, there's a certain amount of traffic already there.
Sure.
And we don't think there's, we don't think there's gonna be that much destination traffic generated by the fuel center, because they either gonna be already on the road system, or they're gonna be coming to Kroger or into that shopping center to shop otherwise. So it's not gonna be an additional trip. And I'm gonna ask Abdul to address that.
Thank you. Once again, my name's Abdul, I'm here with NR Engineering. According to my traffic study, the trip generation table four, it shows that 1,540, 1,540 vehicles per day, 24-hour period, is the number of new trips that facility, this facility will generate.
1,540? 1,540, okay.
Yes, sir.
And that's a 24-hour period?
24-hour, two-way traffic. So it's two-way traffic. So in a sense, half of it approximately is the number of vehicles that come in, I count coming in, coming in as a trip and exiting as a trip. So it's really 1,540 is two ways, so it'll be half of that. Yeah.
And how much is there now? What's existing counts?
This is just for this facility, new trips.
Okay. All right. And you want one more?
Yeah, no, keep going.
The other question, too, has to do with the safety concerns that have been raised. I don't know how you would address that. Certainly, that's a consideration, and I'm curious as to whether or not Kroger does see any safety issues with having the gas station, fuel station, in close proximity to that sub-power station there.
You mean like from explosion or something along those lines? Yeah, no.
Yes.
And we've talked, we've talked, we've talked to the power company about it. They don't, they're not concerned about it at all. The safety issues that we've been concerned about have been the crosswalk and the pedestrian access that we wanted to improve over what is currently on Johnson Ferry Road at this intersection with the, with the subdivision. So what we're talking about is pedestrian access, additional sidewalks, lighting that would allow for better pedestrian access to and from the shopping center than exists today.
I have a follow-up on that, because I, it's my understanding that the Kroger representative was asked this issue about the power station and told the community a number of times that he was gonna follow up with Georgia Power and get a definitive answer. I think that was actually in the notes from the, in the community meetings that he had. And yet, we've seen nothing in the packet that would suggest that he followed through on, on that.
I'm just gonna say, we, we have requested that from Georgia Power, and they've not responded.
Do we have a copy of, could we get a copy of that letter? Or, or does, or Ben, do you have that somewhere?
We'll be more than happy to provide that.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just...
And we've asked, we've asked, I've just recently gotten involved, but we've asked for some sort of affirmative written statement or...
Yeah, I mean, that's what I think he...
...not opposition, or we do not have that at this point.
I think your client is behind you. What did he...
Sorry, the question was asked, my name's Paul Giacca with the Kroger Company. The question was asked, have we contacted the power company? And as part of our initial due diligence, yes, we checked. And during our second community meeting, the question was, well, did you really check to make sure they were okay with it? So we went back, asked that question, hey, are you okay with having a fuel center in this distance to your substation? The response was yes, and we'll give that to you in writing.
Okay. If you'll, when you get that, give that to the staff. Yeah, of course. Okay, John?
Counsel for the applicant. And there's been some illusion, and I can tell through the packet, that you were just recently retained, and I guess this would go to your request for deferral. I don't know if you could give us any insight onto that, because it looks like Kroger submitted that, and now you're involved. And more specifically, you said that you didn't think that any further conversation would be fruitful? I don't understand.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that at this point, we reached out to counsel that represents the neighborhood. We got no indication that they would be agreeable to discuss it much further, except with not doing this site and go somewhere else. So I'm not gonna mislead you, and that's why I said I think your leadership would be very important in trying to bring the community and this applicant together to see if there is some possible resolution that could be made.
Okay.
What do you hope to accomplish during the deferral period?
We would hope that we would be able to get some support, work out conditions of, of zoning that would be acceptable to the neighborhood, and come back to you with, with some sort of unity.
Okay.
Why I ask for withdrawal of prejudice.
We'll just kind of wind, wrap it up and see if anybody's got any kind of final questions. So we want to give everybody, this obviously is very important to everyone. So we do want to demonstrate leadership and ask the right, make sure we understand both sides of the issue completely. So, John, go ahead.
I do have one for the legal representative for the neighborhood.
Well, I'm over here and I live in the neighborhood, and I suppose today I'm a legal representative.
Are you, are you legally representing them?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm a defendant lawyer.
Okay.
I can certainly answer legal questions. I'm on our back.
Okay. Chris, Shannon, done there? Bert? Yeah. All right. And so with that, I think we have explored everything that needs to explore, and at this point, I'm going to entertain a, a motion on, on the special land use permit, 1405, Kroger Company.
I'll make a motion that we deny SLUP 14-5.
We have a motion to deny SLUP 1405. Do I have a, do I have a second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to recommend denial. So do we have any discussion on the motion?
You guys, I think it's important, I do have a little bit, just something to say, that staff has, has recommended denial. The community has come out strongly for denial, and I think that it's up to, to send this over to the council and let them make a decision as well. But I do believe that they have the power, if they choose to deny it, to come back six months from now and, and reengage in whatever way they want to.
Yeah. I guess I, you know, I mean, I'll make, you wanna go first? I mean, I usually...
My, my, Mr. Chairman, my only, my only, and commission, my only real concern is that it appears that, that Kroger submitted the application and now has realized that they need counsel. Counsel's asking for additional time. Generally, it would be my inclination to want to give everyone the opportunity to go through the process with the best understanding and the most education with regard to how the process happens. That said, as it stands, I, I don't know if it, if it's gonna matter at this point.
Yeah, I guess, well, go ahead.
Normally, I'm always in favor of, of a deferral first to give everyone a chance to, to see if they can work something out. I've got, I think, a lot of concerns with this, and at some point, although I do think that Kroger will have to decide, and the neighborhood will have to decide, too, if this is, if you do want to take the, the bright line approach, knowing that ultimately it may be up to the courts to decide what's gonna happen there, whether this current zoning is gonna stand, or the permit denial will stand. I still think I would encourage the sides to continue talking, because obviously, what we do here is simply a recommendation that will go to the city council for review. In this case, I'm not sure, it seemed like that there was a real willingness to listen on behalf of the neighborhood, given the concerns that they've raised, which are serious. And I think it may have been, in this case, one of those rare instances where it's better to, let's go ahead and send it up the line and not postpone the, the agony.
Caitlin, do you have anything?
Well, I, I want to say that I appreciate everyone's input, and, you know, I, I went through, I, I struggled with this as well. I mean, on the one hand, I, you know, I, I'm a neighbor, I'm a, you know, live in the community, I, you know, we know that we need development, we know the city needs to continue to move forward. On the other hand, I think Kroger has, I mean, if, Kroger had started this back in August or July or wherever, there was been plenty of time to engage, I think. And the fact that an attorney's been engaged, you know, I think it's a lot to ask the community to, to, to go through this over and over again, because Kroger has, has pushed it off. And I'm, sorry, Kroger's a great, obviously a good company, obviously well-respected, and I don't know what occurred in that regard. I went through all 19 criteria, and, and certainly my vote is going to come down to how I weigh each of those criteria, and whether I agree with what the staff has come up with and what I've heard here this evening. I think overall, there were three big issues for me. One was, and I understand we are still with this application, viewing the DeKalb County comprehensive land use plan, but even in that, it, the comprehensive, DeKalb County talks about pedestrian orientation, maybe not as strongly as we do in Brookhaven, but they certainly have done that. And I can't, I can't come to any, anything but that a fuel center is automobile-centric rather than pedestrian, you know, centric. Second, I, I struggle with, I, when we first started this, looking at zoning maps, I, I, to be honest, two years ago, three years ago, I wouldn't have known that we were, that that center was neighborhood shopping versus commercial. You know, in the last two, three, four years, I've learned a lot. And I know that neighborhood shopping, among other things, serves the immediate neighborhood. And I think a trade area, which I believe is the term that's used, is of 18,000, whether it's 18,000 households, 18,000, I don't know, but a trade area of 18,000 is bigger than my immediate neighborhood. And then, thirdly, the fact that the community is not underserved. Is it overserved? Probably never will be on anything. But I agree, again, I agree with the staff that it is not yet underserved, underserved. And if I were, you know, if I had the choice of maybe using Mr. Dillard's argument, that there are gas stations in close proximity, I don't know that they would get there today if they, but they've, they've been there for a lot of years. So there's a lot of things in DeKalb County and in our community that would probably be done different 20 years from now, probably everywhere in our lives. So with that, I, I, I've certainly, my vote's gonna be carried by what I weighed those 19 criteria. Okay, if no one else, then we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion, all in favor of recommending the city council deny this special land use permit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'd ask you to continue. I know, if everybody wants, but just, we, I do appreciate, everyone was very respectful. We appreciate the decor, and believe it or not, we've got another case, we've got the Lips Restaurant to hear this evening. So I'm gonna take, it's 9:06, we'll take five minutes. As, as, is that okay?
Yep.
Do I have to ask for a motion?
We don't have to ask.
I don't know.
Look, I'd step, I'd step out.
Thank you all for...
Thanks, everybody, I appreciate the help.
So... I mean, I learned... Sorry. I'm 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 sorry.[1643.12]
I learned. Seriously. 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 I learned. Seriously.